Hey, welcome everybody. It's Tyler Ward. We're gonna get started.
California.
I'm Tyler Ward. With me are Bonnie Tucker and Bill Kennedy, fellow Select Board members. We have Nicole McStay, Town Administrator here, and Justin Hansen is the witness. Tonight's agenda, start off with a public hearing pursuant to RSA 32:11. We're gonna talk about the expenditure of approved budget, but this is an overage because...
Surprise bill from health insurance.
Yeah, because of an unfortunate situation. Okay, then we'll meet with Liz Ogden at the Housing Trust and discuss a pilot program that's a payment in lieu of taxes on the property. Henry Underwood is here. Hey, welcome. From Southwest Regional Planning Commission to discuss... Is everybody familiar with High Street and Vine Street and Union Street and Elm Street, the five one? Very exciting intersection. We'll talk about that, and then the intersection of Elm and 101, because we have our fire station going in, and I'm sure there's plenty of work to be done, and there's freedom of work and stuff. So we're gonna discuss that. We have minutes from October 7th to approve potentially, and then some expendable trust fund expenses. There's an additional one we'll add to that. And then, if you want to stick around, you get to find out how much your tax rate's gonna be in your next building. Beth Marsh is here to share a little with us, right? Just remember, we are on air, and this will be filmed and archived for future viewing, and most of us know each other, but if you want to make a comment or have a question, call on ya. Just state your name for the record, so we can get that in the minutes. Tim Brezovic's behind the scenes tonight again, capturing all this. Great. All right.
Open a public hearing?
I'll do that. I make a motion, we go into the public hearing for the over expenditure approved budget due to RSA...
3211.
32:11. Was it a favorite? All right.
This is the public notice that we put out that I'm sure brought most people here. Talk a little bit about what brought us to this point. On September 24, School Care, which is the cooperative that the town is a member of that provides our health insurance for ourselves and other municipal and school district pool members, informed us that the town would be required to pay an additional assessment equals one and a half months' premium. Unsurprisingly, we did not budget for that in the budget year that started on June 1st. So this is due to two years' worth of actual costs that were far in excess of what was anticipated by School Care's actuarial studies. And for Peterborough, this assessment equals to $223,969.24. You may have seen in the news not terribly long ago that Lebanon and other school districts around the state had some really large assessments, but also, again, equal to a month and a half worth of premiums. So RSA 3211 does allow, under certain circumstances, unusual circumstances, for the town to apply for permission to overspend the approved budget. This is the budget that was voted on by town meeting. You see, I've got a snippet of the RSA here. It's a very oddly written RSA in that, particularly in that it combines clauses that apply to municipalities and clauses that apply to school districts into the exact same RSA. So that's why you see a lot of ellipses there, because I took out the stuff that was really only pertinent to school districts when I was putting this slide together. But if you're interested, I have a whole thing right here, and you're welcome to read it for yourself. But essentially, under certain unusual circumstances, the selectmen after holding a public hearing can ask the Commissioner of the Department of Revenue Administration for the authority to overspend the approved budget. So that's what we would like to do here. Here we go. So what would be over expenditure mean? If approved, the town will be able to use its available fund balances to pay the unanticipated cost. $215,547.68 would come from the general fund, and balances would be split between the water budget, and that should have been wastewater budget. So water and wastewater handle the costs of providing insurance to a couple of our utilities employees as well. Any questions?
We have discussed this.
We have.
We're over the barrel here.
More or less.
We can approve this with approved dissent. We can make all our comments about how we think it's ridiculous that this should happen, right? Anything?
Yeah, I mean, we have talked about it. This plan is self-insured, so if expenditures for healthcare are higher than what the organization anticipated, there has to be made up something. And my understanding is that they have reserves, but that there was so much, there were so many claims in excess of what they anticipated, that their reserves are now dangerously low. This is my understanding of the situation.
And that if this assessment wasn't made to the members, they would be well into the red before the year's end.
So that's the situation. So then, my understanding is that this overage by them, based on all the claims that they didn't budget for or anticipate, is being allocated out to all the towns and school districts that are part of this organization. So this is our per share. My understanding is we do have some reserves that could cover it.
We do. We do. We have fund balance available for the general... So the utilities funds are funded by enterprise funds. The selectmen have the power to vote to overexpend the budget if we need to come the end of the year. I'm really not terribly worried about that, you know, $8,500-ish to come out of those funds. My big concern is the $215,000. That would be the responsibility of the general, our general budget, our operating budget. So the selectmen have, if granted the permission by the Commissioner, would be allowed to tap into the town's fund balance, which is, at this point, over $2 million. We need to retain about $800,000 of that for cash flow purposes, which leaves a balance that can be used in emergency situations like this.
Yeah. And I think it's also important to note, thank you for that, and I also think it's important to note that we, Lily and I know you're working on this, are also based on, I don't want to call it mismanagement, but based on a big concern about the overage, which was unanticipated, we are looking at other plans to consider for the future.
Yes.
So, because this is really not the way we want to be operating.
Want to speak to the consequences if we don't pay this?
Yeah, so there are some consequences, although, interestingly, at nearly 10:00 AM this morning, 9:44 AM, we received an email from school providing us with an alternative option. But just to start with what we were originally told, that if we did not make the payment before January 1st, 0.5% interest would begin to accrue. If we did not inform School Care of our intent to make payment, or, you know, some kind of how to make them whole, then claims would be held beginning on May 1st, and the final deadline for payment was due July 25th. If not, it would drop us entirely, and we would be responsible for all of our claims. As of this morning, we do have another option that was made available to us, that if we were able to make a minimum payment of one-third of the contribution assessment, then they would hold the interest so long as the remaining payment or payments were made by July 15th. So apparently, they've heard a bit from the membership. So it's still, but again, you know, coming up with a third is $70,000 some odd thousand out of the general fund. I know Lily just handed me that register.
$66,235.
Yeah, thank you. So $66,235 would have to come from somewhere in our general fund, in our operating budget, and we really, we've got some ideas for where we could pull some of that from without having an impact on services or programs, but those are relatively small dollars, really adds up to about $30,000 of it when you put it all together. There may be some other couch cushions that we haven't moved under yet to find more, but, you know, the couch cushions are pretty limited. So, you know, unfortunately, I start to look in Seth's direction and start talking about roadway maintenance money and that sort of thing. Which is why we really, in order to avoid those impacts on the approved budget, on the approved operating, it makes much more sense to ask in advance for permission to overspend the budget, and see if we can't use that money without having negative impacts on our other programs.
So he could stop, you could stop the Pine Street project, right?
Yeah. My name's Dick Reynolds. What would be the advantage of the town to pay a third now versus the 215?
Yeah, so that's that half a percent interest.
The money's coming from the same place, correct?
Yeah.
Regardless?
I'm sorry?
The money would be coming from the same place, general fund primarily, regardless?
Yes. Yeah, so the third just means that we're avoiding that half a percent interest penalty between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Which you're also avoiding by paying...
If we were able to pay the full amount, yes, we would entirely avoid that. So that's the hope, is that we'll be able to pay the full amount if we're granted permission to overexpend the budget. But that's...
By the Department of Revenue.
By the Department of Revenue.
Are you saying that to pay one-third is not overpaying the budget?
It would be unless we were cut to cut other things already within the budget. So we would have to look at something that we're not funding in our current budget if we're not granted permission to overexpend.
Which you might be able to do with 60K, but not at 200K.
Correct, yeah. And so then we would have to look at other options for making up the rest.
Okay.
Yep.
But the deadline would be in the next fiscal year?
The deadline would be next fiscal year, which does open up some other opportunities at town meeting to raise and appropriate. Yes.
But then you're also gonna have to budget for this going forward, knowing that they don't know how to manage their funds, so we have to be safe.
It's a challenging situation to navigate through, for sure.
I'd like to add one last thing, that people might be thinking that if we were to put this off until July, the promises to pay and switch to health insurance companies profile, this is something that is owed no matter what.
Right, yeah.
Even if you switch?
Even if we switch.
Even if we switch, yeah. We've already, we've examined the documents with town attorney, and we do owe this amount or all of it.
Bob Herring Smith. So if you paid one-third now, the rest of it remains in the fund, earning income presumably for the town?
Sorry.
If you paid the one-third payment now, then the remaining two-thirds, instead of being expended immediately, would sit in town accounts earning something...
Correct.
Until it's paid by July 15th?
Until it's due, yeah.
Okay. Is that a material amount?
It's about, I'm not sure what our interest rate is at this point. I know it keeps dropping. We were just talking about that.
It's dropped to 2.7 as of last Thursday?
So it's not nothing.
Well, I don't think we're deciding tonight how we're gonna spend the money or when we're gonna spend the money exactly.
That's correct. We're just, what we're, the purpose of the public hearing is to essentially open it up to the public, to hear the pros and cons about using the fund balance, or requesting permission to use the fund balance. And then, assuming that you wish to go forward after you close the public hearing, then vote to make the request of the Commissioner of the Department of Revenue Administration.
So if we decide to just do a third, would we even have to take anything from the fund balance, and then would we even have to contact the DRA?
So if you choose to do that, yes, because what you'll end up having to do, if you're not able to utilize fund balance, then we're going to have to assume that the full amount is gonna come out of the current year's operating budget. Because we can't expect necessarily that a special warrant article or something like that is gonna pass, that's gonna make the current operating budget whole. And even if it were to pass, it's the middle of May by that point, so we're already near the very end of our operating year. So I think we definitely want to make sure that we ask. Yes, that's my... And then whether or not the third payment is made before January 1st, or, you know, some other, you know, some other payment plan, really, you know, we'll figure that out as we go.
Ron?
Ron McIntyre. Just to be clear, just point of clarification, if the total amount, 400,000 plus...
200.
Is utilized, is taken from the general fund, would that drop the general fund below the level that the state requires us?
No.
Okay.
No, we have more than adequate fund balance at this time.
Thank you.
Carol?
Carol Nelson, Peterborough. How quickly do you think the DRA would get back to you, and when do you have to let the insurance company know what your decision is?
So, DRA, we've only had to do this one time before, and I don't want to speak of that particular circumstance, but they were very quick to respond at that time. So I expect that they'd probably be fairly quick to respond this time as well. It might take a week or so, but we'll probably hear back pretty quickly.
And then how, when do you have to get back to the insurance company with your answer?
Amanda, do you remember?
By the end of the year, I believe.
Yeah, so we've got plenty of time.
Al Lenas. Have the underlying causes for this overage been discussed, are they known, first of all, and would we ever be involved in that?
So...
Are there some guidelines for...
So the...
I guess one of their projections, I guess.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Amanda, but our understanding, Amanda sits in on the School Care's meetings, the whole virtual meetings, on a regular basis. And so our understanding is essentially that a very small percentage of the membership, it's like 1.6% of the membership, is responsible for the overage. So some very significant healthcare costs had to be covered. They have an actuarial study done every two years, if I remember correctly?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And those actuarial studies did not capture either of the two years in which these extraordinary costs were accrued. So the actuarial study's being conducted right now for the next two years, and whoever's doing the study went, "Oh, my gosh, you're in trouble. You don't have enough money in your reserves to even get you through the rest of this fiscal year." And so that's why this came more or less entirely out of the blue for everybody.
But that's not malpractice?
No, unfortunately, so this is really getting a bit into the weeds. So in recent years, you've heard about, some of the state laws have changed for these pool insurance groups that have really reduced the amount of reserves that they're allowed to carry. They're required to return any overages above a certain amount to the membership. So that has limited their ability to carry a reserve that may have been able to address this, so.
You're playing odds with actuarials?
More or less, yes. Yeah, that's really what it comes down to.
Rick Samuel?
Yeah, Rick Lesser. Just curious if we have any discussion tonight about possibilities where we might have to cut if we decide to go into the current budget? In other words, are there police cars or fire cars out there we can push to next year that haven't been purchased? Have you looked at some of those possibilities?
We have been discussing those possibilities, yeah. So before we really get into doing that, though, we want to see where we can go with the fund balance first. And then if we gotta make some hard decisions, then we'll bring, you know, Lily and I will sit down with all the department directors and say, "Okay, guys, let's crack open the books and see what we got."
Anne, hi Lily Gilligan. To clarify, he's put on a CIP hat. You can't...
Yeah, can't use our funds.
You can't save the money in capital improvement cuts. It has to be from the general fund.
No, I understand that.
We buy our fire trucks, our police vehicles, not in the general fund.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah, so we can't use any of those.
Oh, that's because they're...
Unfortunately, those are exactly, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, that's...
That would be great.
Carol?
Carol Nelson again. So you guys are just starting your budget planning process, correct?
For the upcoming, yeah, F by 27, yeah.
So would it behoove you to have some type of an emergency fund, should this happen again? And how can we be assured that other plans, even if we switch, don't have this happen as well? You can't really...
Yeah, I was gonna say, the answer to the second one is, you can't. If you're in a pool-type plan, this isn't regular health insurance, this isn't a for-profit company, because it's a cooperative pool, all members benefit in the good years, and we all suffer a bit in the bad years, and this is a bad year. Since we've been with School Care, which has been a very long time, I'm not even sure what year it was that we moved over to School Care, I want to say it was 2014 or 2015, this has never happened. Most years, we get some kind of a premium holiday, is what they call it, but essentially, you get a reduction on the anticipated premium cost because we've done so well. It's the first time I've ever seen an assessment like this. Came as a real shock.
I mean, is there a way to find out if other pools are having the same issue, or is this just indicative to, or narrowed down to this one pool?
There's only one other pool in New Hampshire like this, it's Health Trust. So they're not in the same position, for whatever reason. Maybe their actuarial studies, you know, were done at a better point in the cycle, you know, maybe they just didn't have the same kind of surprise costs, you know, from such a small percentage of the membership, you know, whatever the difference is.
But I think it's important to note that this benefit is a pool, a risk pool benefit. It's not insurance. So we are self-insured. So the actuary of people can do all their work and try to figure it out, but in the end, that organization that we're contracted with does not take risk. The organizations are taking the risk. So if the actuaries get it wrong, and sometimes this can happen, it hits all of us and not them. So one of the things that I'm interested in us exploring is looking at other possible organizations where the structure is the same, but also potentially looking at other organizations we can contract with where they take the risk, we do not take the risk. This is part of the problem, and to your point, Carol, we don't have a pool. The organization does, but it was insufficient. So then, if it is insufficient, then it hits all of us, and we're on the hook. And so if you have a contract with an organization where it is true insurance, where they're taking the risk, then you really are covered. That is true insurance. That's not what this is, right?
I'm anticipating in that scenario that rates would go up.
The rates would go up, so it's a trade-off.
Yeah.
It's a trade-off.
Absolutely.
Yep.
You mentioned they're a for-profit organization. Do we know what the profit was?
No, not for profit.
Oh, there they are.
They're not, they're not for profit, yeah. They're managing cooperative on behalf of the members, yeah. And thank you, that was a better explanation than mine.
Anyone else?
Dave Odden. I just wanted to ask, wouldn't it be true that surplus that we have in our budget is our cushion? And what we're really discussing here tonight is, is that in order to use that cushion, which we have set aside as surplus, we have to have a state's permission?
Yes.
That's all it is? Nothing more than that?
That's all it is.
And once we get that permission, then we have all the scope that we want to figure out on that thing?
That's true. The only caveat, I would say, to it is that this year, we do have the funds, and we hadn't, and I don't think we've ever, set aside funds purely for this kind of situation. So I think we're just, we're fortunate that we're in this situation right now.
Al Lenas again. I think you've touched on this. Has the insurance pool, or the organization behind it, anticipated these kinds of issues? And have they ever raised ways you could save some money, some more money, in their pool? Because they have a contingency budget as well, I guess.
They don't have enough of a contingency.
Right. Have they ever, have you ever had a chance to discuss that with them?
They're not allowed...
It doesn't sound like it.
Yeah, they're not allowed to by state law to have more than a certain amount of contingency, and so they're already expecting to go far past that contingency amount before the end of this fiscal year.
Are there other, one more question on that. Are there other possibilities within the structure that allow them to not change the rate structure, but change the conditions, i.e. deductibles? Some deductibles are higher deductibles or have deductibles at home?
Not in the middle of the year. They can't do that. I know that they're trying to phase out some of the more expensive plans, and I believe that they voted to discontinue a couple of them this year. So those will sunset. Not any plans that were part of our offerings, but...
But the interesting thing is that they have their actuaries who help them set the benefit design, but when they set the benefit design, they're off the hook for what happens. So we're all collectively at risk. So, you know, as Nicole mentioned, they've been doing this a long time, and so far, so good, not this time. So you can have situations when, no matter how good you are as an actuarial, there's some unanticipated thing that happens. It can always happen, and it just happened to happen recently, that was significant, they did not account for, but then they are not at risk, we are.
Yeah, but there's really no they, there's an us, is what it comes down to.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Do any of you happen to know how many school systems are in or under that pool?
That's a really good question.
In the pool?
So it's a combination of the towns.
Towns and districts.
Okay. Like, is it 100? Is it 50?
There is.
I think it's 65 schools and 35 towns.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was just around 100 or so.
Yep.
A sizable pool.
Right, and it's just in New Hampshire?
Just in New Hampshire.
So will all those towns and districts go to the state as well? Most likely, and ask the same thing that we're could be asking them. And I'm not sure if that's gonna impact, you know, whether they treat it as an emergency or not, I guess that's...
Yeah.
We do know that only 24% of the groups have paid thus far, so we can only presume if they haven't. Their request on, what was it, September 28th?
Yeah.
That we immediately pay by October 1st. So there's still 76% of the groups that have not paid this bill, and they're looking at their options and trying to figure out what plan to take that makes most sense for them. But most schools that you've seen news coverage of recently have all stated that they are going to pay for this using fund balance.
So they're going through a similar process, but they do it through the Department of Education as opposed to Revenue Administration.
So I'm just thinking, other towns are probably in the same boat as we are. We're considering leaving this pool. I'm sure there are others as well. If that's, let's say 20 of them leave, we stay, I'm assuming the rates are gonna go up.
The rates are gonna go up anyways. We've already been informed that to expect a double-digit rate increase for next year.
And that's part of the consideration as well.
Yeah.
Look at other options.
Great. A lot of great questions, good dialogue. Thanks, everyone. I just wanted to point out, we did not receive anybody, this is, there was an offer to email this Select Board, we did not receive any emails, any calls, not any... Okay. Make a, are you finished?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing. All those there? Aye. And now we decide to, we have authority to go to the hearing?
Yeah.
One more motion.
A second.
All right, all those there? Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Is Liz, oh, she's here?
I don't think Liz is here. But this is, I could run you through this. So this is... So this is the proposed pilot agreement for 31 Concord Street. This had been owned by, gosh, one of the churches. It had been affordable housing for many years. The church wanted to get out of the landlord business, Kentucky Housing Trust is very interested to continue to offer affordable housing in those apartments. And so they purchased the property, and then they came to us and said, hey, we purchased the property, we'd like to extend our pilot program to also include this property. We took a look, I sent the pilot agreement over to a town attorney, he made a couple of modifications to the ones that, you know, we've had in the past with them, and we're ready to put that forward to the board. So this would be a five-year pilot agreement. All pilots will need to be reviewed every five years now, as we discussed recently. So this will be a five-year agreement. They will continue to pay the municipal portion of the property tax on that property, but the pilot agreement would allow them to not recharge the balance of the property tax.
School, state?
Yeah, school, state, local education, county, yep.
This particular company, as you remember, different projects in Peterborough, they already have a grant and pilot. They seem to be good operators.
And it is an unprofitable.
I think it was the company that charged it.
Yeah, I think you're right. It was the company.
Anybody from Underwood's, so, any questions?
No, I'm, I used to be on the board.
Yeah, right. Any questions, any reason we shouldn't just... Okay, can I make a motion that we enter the proposal agreement for the pilot program for 31 Concord Street for the Kentucky Housing Trust?
Second.
All those there? All right, Henry, you've been waiting. Welcome. You're the big show tonight, we all wanted to know what's gonna happen up there.
Now for something completely different, I was gonna say, I do have a couple of copies of the slides for the, for the select board, etc. Thanks, thanks everyone. My name's Henry Underwood, I'm a planner at Southwest Region Planning Commission, and here to share kind of some high-level findings from some traffic studies we completed this spring at the request of town staff. And, yeah, I'll, I have about 15 minutes or so of content, and just invite you to interrupt me with burning questions, and then invite as much discussion as you wanna have at the end.
So if I see a hand go up, I'll call them and pass it over.
That'd be fine. So here's kind of, kind of the goal for this, 15 minutes or so. First of all, if you're not familiar with the Planning Commission, we're one of the state's nine regional planning commissions, set up by state law. We've been around for 50 years, Peterborough is one of the members in our 34 community region, and we provide technical assistance services around housing, economic development, land use, and transportation. The latter being kind of where we're, where we're here tonight. This is sort of what we'll go through, like why we did the studies, why we're asked to complete them, why to do studies to begin with, shares where you can access some readily available traffic study, studies today, other than what I'll present. And then we'll go into the work that was requested this spring, you know, what the locations were, our methods, and findings for the areas that were mentioned at the beginning. We'll be looking at 101 and Elm, and then at the end, the five-way intersection. Next slide, please. So why, why do the studies? A lot of reasons. So as far as system performance, this monitoring system performance allows us to understand whether traffic's growing in an area or staying the same. You know, objectively, being able to say if, if something, an area is busy, or what road users are doing. We can also try to use them to understand specific problems, like delay, or safety, or congestion, and quantify those things in, you know, standardized way, you know, seconds, vehicles per day, vehicles per hour, to allow comparisons from place to place. And they can also be used to assess whether interventions, projects the town is undertaking are effective or not, if you're getting where you wanna go. And this, this example is, is kind of one that appears a lot in transportation-related guidance. A lot of things vary based on things like speed and traffic volume. So the town needs that information readily available to make use of all that guidance. Next slide, please. This is a little bit of a deviation, but the Planning Commission collects a lot of traffic data throughout the years. There are about 400 sites in our region, which we monitor regularly at the request of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation for federal reporting and compliance purposes. But all that information is available to you, anyone in this room. And I wanted to just point out that the department has a website where the data we collect is available for you to look at the results. You can find a link to it at our page at the bottom there, sbrbc.org/traffic. And there's kind of some excerpts of what the tool looks like. And there's, there's a couple of dozen, you know, stations in Peterborough that we look at every three years. But tonight, I'll be talking about what we call kind of special requests. There are locations in addition to those that you wanted, something, wanted to learn more about. Next slide, please. So here are the locations in the map. We, we conducted some data collection at five places, we'll focus on the top four today. And the, I guess I'll name what some of the types of studies were, and I'll tell more about that on the next slide. But on New Hampshire 101, we wanted to get kind of a current snapshot of traffic volumes and speeds. We chose a location between Elm Street and the traffic light to get a sense of how fast people are going. We did some manual observations at the intersection itself, you know, to understand where people are turning at busy times of day, and what the delay is like for the Elm Street southbound approach. We looked at volumes and speeds on Elm Street, and then we did a kind of a turning movement count, which I'll describe in a little more detail at the five-way section. And you can see the dates of the studies, they were, they were actually this spring. We provided the data to the town last month. Next slide, please. So there are three, three methods that we employed for the data collection. Automatic traffic recorder studies use pneumatic tubes and a computer on the side of the road to count cars, you know, is it, which direction they're going, is it a truck or a car? That's what's giving us and you, like, the volume, direction, speed of, of traffic. And they're, they're installed for usually a period of something like a week, and they're collecting data around the clock, which we'll show on our next slides. For the intersections, we, they're done manually, you know, a person shows up and observes the intersection, and they're gonna record what drivers are doing as far as turns, the queue size of people in this case for the Elm Street southbound approach. All right, go right on to the findings then, unless there isn't any more questions about, or there aren't any questions about the methods or locations. Thanks. This is a little dense, but we'll go, go through each location together. So the first one I'm focusing on is an automatic traffic recorder, you know, one of these pneumatic tube studies that was located on 101, east of Elm Street. And this purpose of this was, okay, what's kind of a snapshot of 101 traffic volumes and speeds in this area? It's near to the Elm Street intersection.
So just to clarify, is it that small white dot there, just west of Old Elm?
So it's not labeled, but the, yeah, it's, it's right about in here was the location it was installed, and you can barely make out the equipment in that part of the photo. And I think every, everyone knows, you know, 101 in this area is one lane in each direction, there's a two-way left turn lane in the middle with paved shoulders. It's posted at 35 miles an hour and drops to 30, you know, when you get to the traffic The, kind of the key data we get out of installing the tubes is just the volume and types of vehicles by day of week, by hour of the day. These are kind of the, kind of the high-level numbers of traffic volumes. I'll point you to kind of this one, the weekday average is about 9,500 vehicles, is what we observed, you know, at our June study period. And as far as the distribution, light-duty vehicles are cars and light trucks, medium-duty is like your fuel delivery truck or a box truck, one of Seth's dump trucks. And then heavy-duty is multi-unit trucks, tractor-trailers. So those were the figures we observed, and, you know, it comes out to, you know, typical kind of 90-plus percent, you know, light-duty vehicles on this part of the road. You know, lower Saturday and Sunday volume compared to weekday. I think the key finding for this location was the speeds.
So the speed there is 35 miles an hour?
Yeah, it's posted at 35, right. And we look, we measured speeds in east direction, the statistics we're showing here are something called the 85th percentile speed, which is often used by people to help set speeds as one of the factors. What it means is 85% of vehicles are going at or lower than that speed. So eastbound, headed towards the traffic light, drivers, 85% of drivers are going, you know, 45 miles an hour or less. That, though, is, is very far, you know, from the posted speed limit. The rates of people exceeding the supposed speed limits are very high in both directions. And it's partly because the character of the road is similar to, you know, 101 between your roundabout and Dublin, it's kind of clear and wide, and that's attributed.
This is like, this is a fairly steep hill.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
I just, I have a question. So for a road like this, two-way, double yellow, state highway, how does this compare? I think this is starting to where you were making comparison to Dublin area, but how this is compared to other roads similar to this? In terms of the degree to which the speed isn't seen?
This would, well, it's hard for me to, I, I'll just, you know, it was just a little bit of a guess, because there's a lot of examples, but this would be on the high end. You know, I think people, this is not a set rule, but you'd probably like to see a speed limit and the 85th percentile speed, maybe closer to like 5 miles an hour. And it's, it's, you know, it's more than, more than 10, basically, so...
And that's unusual.
I mean, some places, it's, it's definitely not unprecedented, I guess, this, there are lots of cases where honestly, I mean, the posted speed limit is not in line with what drivers are operating at.
I was trying to get a feel for the extent to which it's an outlier versus in the norm for this kind of a highway.
Sure. And it's, it's a hard question to answer, because there's all different contexts and...
Of course.
But we could, we could look at some other sites where there's speed data available in Peterborough, and then, you know, let's say 101 and Keene, and give you a better answer, so...
Probably be approached in...
Rick was there. Yeah, I just, I actually walk along this road every once in a while. I'm just surprised, because, you know, you have the traffic light right in town, the intersection, and you've got the roundabout by Shaw's, and both of those are kind of constraining your coming eastbound, you know, you hit the roundabout slowly, and then you're going downhill, but to a light.
Yeah.
And the other way, maybe you, maybe the excessive speed is because people are going up that hill and they have to work harder, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I think that's really the limiting factor in this situation, is the hill more than the highway, might be my way of thinking.
Al?
Al, Al, let us. I would like to add to that comment, because I was gonna make a similar comment, in that coming down the hill to the light, going eastbound, is it, there's usually a backup, many times there's a backup, especially in those hours. So the backup should lessen the speed, in my sense, because you can see that traffic light, and you can see the backup.
Yeah.
You wanna slow down, but they're not slowing down, it seems. Is it anomaly there, or it appears to be?
Yeah, or danger.
Danger.
Carol?
Carol Nelson. So there, the, the state did a fairly recent traffic study at 101 and 123, so that...
That's similar.
Exactly. So that could be looked at.
Yeah, I think we should, I, I'd like to know that.
I presume that data is at your site's board?
Yeah, I think some of it will be on that portal that I pointed to. We've, I know we've done some other speed studies in, on 101 and Peterborough that we could look at.
Now, on this situation like this, would it be recommended that we have a more of a police presence, or do we raise the speed limit to get closer to what people are actually doing?
Yeah.
Can we put a toll in?
Well, that would be strict.
Well, I know, I know you can't put a toll in. I don't, you know, you can't, you can't change the speed limit yourselves, but I'm sure DOT would be amenable to changing it, because it's, it's so far outside of what's enforceable. In some cases, they do. This, you know, this, usually, I mean, a, a speed limit is set based on the operating speeds. To, to try to enforce 35 miles per hour here would be an enormous burden on, for enforcement.
Steve Lopasky. Anecdotally, that stretch, especially westbound, the 35 mile an hour speed limit is counterintuitive. When I'm driving up that stretch, I have to remind myself what the speed limit is. And in fact, I was given a warning once, very nicely to the element ago. But you can see that there's a 4 mile an hour difference when people go in faster westbound, going up that hill, not anticipating the, the stoplight, and I, I think that 35's unrealistic for that stretch of road.
So I'd like to...
Just a quick question, Amanda Davie. I might have missed, how long this study was for?
It was for about a week, so we have six full days of data. And I should say that when we report on speeds, we don't count all cars in our statistics, we only count cars that aren't closely following someone else, you know, so, because that would bias the statistics.
That speed limit westbound was 45 when it was two lanes, and it got changed to one lane.
Oh, with the turn lane?
Yes, when the turn lane got put in.
So, so it was 45 westbound. So, and I'm not an engineer, you know, there could be a reason when they, to have a two-way left turn lane, they want the speeds lower, and, but, this is what people are doing. This is all we can say.
It's also because of the roundabout, I think that was the other reason why it was lower, was in anticipation of, you know, needing the traffic to slow down again, to not go straight over the roundabout as many, that's already done, yeah.
And would this, would the town have to request a different speed limit, or would the state consider it based on this study?
They would consider it based on this study. But, yeah, they would also, again, there may be a specific reason why they posted it at 35.
Yeah, Carol made a great point, the turning lane, that speed, an accident at 35 is gonna be different than an accident at 45, so...
Tyler, do you remember when it was two lanes going up, you could pass another car going up that hill?
Oh, there's a passing lane?
There used to be.
There used to be, yes.
Yeah, that was removed, but the road was never narrowed, so...
Okay.
They did the same thing in Dublin.
Yeah, they did.
You know, going up to...
Yeah, and people probably still speed right through there, like they always did.
Okay, you know, let's keep, keep on going, because there's, there's three other sites to talk a little bit about. I'll just move over, you know, we were talking about this location on 101, now we're, we're moving over to Elm Street, another traffic recorder location, you know, it's set up for six days, and we wanna understand the volume and speed. It was located just north of the community center, and, you know, many of you know this, it's, you know, two, two-lane road with sidewalk on the, on the east side... the, on the east side with a granite curb. And it's a town, you know, class-five road as opposed to state road. It's posted at 30 miles per hour. And in our study in June, we observed an average of 3,700 vehicles per weekday and kind of this proportion of cars and trucks, you know, much lower. Truck percentage, as you expect and want, it's posted for no trucks near 101. And the speeds are much closer to the, or the operating speeds are much closer to the posted speed than, than on 101. I say that I think there's, the pavement right now, and when we did this study, is in, you know, fair to poor condition. And, you know, when this road is resurfaced, and that, it's, it's actually, it's probably helping to moderate the speeds a little bit and those speeds will, will go up.
That fire station project helps to keep people interested too and slow them down.
Um, let me see if there's anything, but much, much fewer fraction of drivers, you know, speeding here, which you'd want, you know, in an area where you have pedestrian activity and more curb cuts. Yeah. Next slide, please. We're going to, actually, did you skip one slide or, could you go back one? I mean, okay.
It's the one with the red arrows?
Okay, yeah, did it?
That's why I jumped to...
Oh, okay, it's like, I'm seeing...
There was actually two.
I might, I might, there might be a different, different version that's printed out compared to what's on the screen right now.
On this slide?
Um, no, could you, could you go back to the 101 Elm Street? So, this is a technical bug and I'll, I'll send the next updated version out. But we're at the intersection of 101 and Elm Street. And a key question that town staff wanted to learn about was, you know, what people are doing at the intersection. There's four approaches and at each approach, drivers can go left, straight, through. So, we suggested a turning movement study. We observed the intersection at a busy period in the morning from 6:30 to 8:30 and a busy period, period in the afternoon from, let me get the right time. Actually, I have the wrong time on the slide, but the afternoon period was 2:30 to 4:30. And recorded, you know, the movement of every vehicle. And this is, this is a graphical representation, so you see the flow of vehicles on 101 in green and red. So, your westbound 101 traffic is this kind of green group. And in the two-hour peak period, 389 vehicles were through. 58 made the right turn to Elm Street northbound. Kind of, I think you probably get the, how it works out. But I think kind of the, the key findings were, in the AM, there's a little more of a eastbound prevalence on 101 compared to westbound. And then, the, other than those through movements, the busiest three turns are Elm Street to 101 westbound at right turn, followed by the, like, 101 to Elm Street northbound, left turn off 101, followed by left turn from Elm Street to head eastbound on 101. And on the right are just the truck movements, so, kind of, as you'd expect, mainly through movements. Next slide, please. These are the PM diagrams for the, the peak periods. They look very similar because they are. There's still actually a prevalence of eastbound through traffic on 101 in the afternoon. And the top three turns, other than the through movements, are those that I just mentioned. The right, the right turn from Elm to 101 being the busiest, followed by the left from 101 to Elm, followed by the left from Elm to 101 eastbound. The, and the bigger, the part of the story too is the PM volumes are all a lot higher than the AM volumes. Do you, is, do you understand kind of how to interpret the figures? Okay. Next slide, please. So, this is the last study we did at the Elm Street 101 area. Staff told us about concerns about drivers being impatient, waiting on Elm to turn onto 101, and that, you know, in the future, the town's going to expect more traffic and more use of the intersection. So, this study was done to see what delays are today. And I'll walk you through these couple of graphs. And again, this is a, a study where someone manually visits the intersection and for each vehicle that moves, they're kind of logging it so we understand how long the, the queue or the line of cars gets. And this is a little bit cut off by the projector, but it's showing that in the red bars are the right-turn-only lane. So, on the right-turn-only lane, you have that higher volume of vehicles, which we saw in the previous graph. And you have, in the morning, up to two cars, you know, in queue at any time during that busiest two hours. And then, on the left and through lane is the green bars, lower volume of turns and either nobody, you know, waiting in that queue or one car when, when someone else arrived. And this, this chart helps tell the story of how much delay the two lanes experienced. And one way you can interpret it is, is this kind of percentile method where you could say, like, in the case of the right-turn-only lane, 90% of vehicles in those peak periods were 10, waited 10 seconds or less to make their turn. But for that left-through movement, only about half of people waited 10 seconds or less. Most people had to wait, have to wait longer because of, well, the left turn takes, takes longer because they have to clear two, two movements on 101. But, so the stats, the overall stats for the morning period were an average of five seconds of delay per vehicle for the right-turn lane and 12 seconds for the left-turn-through lane. And could go to the next slide, please. This is the PM study. And in the PM, remember, there's like, there's just a lot higher volume. So, all these, what you, the main notice is the queue size. Instead of going up to two vehicles in the queue, it's going up to five, six, seven, eight in some cases, mainly for that left-through movement. Again, they're, they're waiting longer and having a longer queue to wait for those openings. Interestingly, the, the right turn, the right turn, you know, the safer turn is, the, the performance stays pretty good even with a higher volume. The, you know, it's still most of the vehicles, there's just one car, you know, waiting when they arrive. And, you know, on average, in the PM, a right turner's waiting about nine seconds compared to five in the morning. The real difference is that left-through lane, the average we found was 42 seconds in the afternoon compared to 25. And I skipped over this on the previous slide, but it's, the bars are showing the variability and of delay during the study period. And there's, in some cases, there's quite a lot of variability depending on the lane, especially for the left-through turns. Those are these yellow ones, where there's a big variation. I didn't perform the study, but, you know, you could pretend like one, one truck, you know, left turn, they, we need to wait for long, long gaps to make their turn and could ramp up the delay pretty quickly.
May I ask, what's the, the average or normal or standard time waiting at a traffic light?
Yeah.
At the red light, how long is a red light timed for?
Yeah, I, it does vary. I, I don't know off the top of my head. Some, you know, cycles are longer and shorter, but I think it's something on the order of 30 seconds to a minute. Maybe Seth actually could, has experience with the, the timing here.
I don't know, but I'll time it for you.
Yeah. It's something like that, between 30 seconds and a minute?
Well, I was just wondering if it's 42 seconds in the whole scheme of your life to...
Yeah.
...like all that much, but if you're hitting 30 stoplights on your commute, that's going to add up.
Yeah.
But then you leave earlier to compensate for that, don't we?
Yeah. And, you know, just to point out, we're, we're doing these studies at the absolute busiest times of the day. You know, most of the day, these conditions don't exist.
I think Dave had a question.
I was just wondering to ask, if we consider that the stoplights at the bottom of the hill going westbound and it releases people at about 30-second slugs, 45-second slugs?
Yeah.
Then would, would that help explain why the little yellow things go that way?
Um, let's see, those would be a westbound, yeah, it would. I mean, it's, anytime those two 101 lanes are the fullest, it's going to have the most delay.
If you happen to hit the light, you happen to want to make a left-hand turn. When the light goes fine at the bottom of the hill, everybody can make a left-hand turn, but as soon as those cars are released...
Yeah.
You've got that whole backup in, at, in the afternoon when it's the busiest, it's just solid cars coming up to you.
Yeah.
So, that might help explain.
Um, Carol Nelson, I'm not sure what the premise was for this traffic study to be completed. Did you request it?
I...
Seth did. I raised my hand to address that, right as you raised your hand to answer your question.
Oh, okay.
So, I've been kind of waiting for an opportunity, but your comment prompted it, Tyler, so I'm Seth, I'm the public works director. Elm Street is getting specific focus based on our commitments for the fire station project. And what prompted me to step up at that moment is your comment, Tyler, about, well, that's not very long, but in the case of life-saving when it comes to ambulances trying to make that left turn, or our anecdotal evidence at that point about speeding on 101. We all know that some of our cruisers tend to sit up in that, right in that spot because we know there's speeding happening there. We made that commitment through the billing process, leading up to town meeting, then again, a town meeting that we needed to evaluate these intersections and determine whether any modifications need to be made, any could be made, if any equipment needs to be installed or how to facilitate safer and quicker emergency response from that intersection. So, that would be the context for that spot.
Okay. And the, the reason that I'm asking is because when you, you are going to be having a school opening, just not even a mile of the road, early next year, so you're going to have a lot more school buses and school traffic, and those numbers will change significantly, I'm assuming.
And I think we, we timed this to be within the school year.
Yeah.
Um, we, we tried to coordinate with Danica from planning on doing the studies, which occurred in June before school closed. So, they were, you know, June, June 9th through the 15th.
That helps. Yeah, I mean, I guess, and they're going to grow. They're moving, what, K through 8 and then they're eventually going to be K through 12?
Oh, I see. There's just, because of the changes of the school, there's going to be even more school buses.
Charter school. The charter school is moving.
I see. Okay. Right, there's one more slide, I think, for the five-way intersection. This was the last study. In the, the kind of list of requests, the map on the left is, is the area where Elm Street meets Union and High, Vine and Main. There's stop signs on all but the Main Street, I guess, north or westbound approach. And to just learn about kind of the general busyness, you know, the, the volume, we did, conducted a in-person turning movement count where people recorded the movements from each of the five approaches, you know, left, left, right, through.
Just out of curiosity, how many people did you have to have out to do that?
Um, just one person can do an intersection turning movement count of this volume, I'll say. And again, we, we arrived during kind of the peak morning period, which we identified from 6:45 to 8:45 and then a peak PM period. Don't have it on my notes here, but similar to the method at the Elm 101 intersection. And unfortunately, with a five-leg intersection, we don't have the ability to make that variable width diagram, so I'll have to settle for some bar charts and comments. But this, this next graphic is showing the volume, the number of vehicles that arrived at each approach within those two-hour peak periods. So, AM is the dark blue, PM is, is orange. And in both cases, you know, the Main Street approach is, is the busiest and especially so in the afternoon peak period. So, that, that was kind of the busiest of the approaches. Vine is kind of an outlier with much lower volume. And as part of our study, we have data about each turn, you know. It's a little bit tricky to read because, you know, you have terminology like first-left or second-left from certain approaches, but what it shows are, are like, kind of, what are, what are your highest-demand turns? And it's, in the morning, the Elm to Main, you know, right turn is the highest-volume turn, followed by Main to Elm. So, you've got that relationship. In the, in the PM period, you know, volumes are all much higher and the, kind of, the most, the highest-volume turns are a little different. The, the flow switches and Main to Elm is the highest-volume movement, followed by Main to Union, which is a through movement. So, these are kind of some of those stats. We also counted pedestrian movements at the crosswalks. The Union Street crosswalk had the highest number of crossings, 21, in our, in our PM study.
Oh. That was my question, what would the pedestrian data mean?
Yeah, yeah, so...
It's just people crossing that street?
That's right, in either direction.
Yeah.
And we did count, there's one unmarked crossing on Main Street, I think. There was some, I mean, I don't want to say jaywalking, but there's some, some people just making that crossing there.
They do it a little bit further south, but yeah.
At convenience. Yep, thanks.
That's exactly where it is.
Uh, let's see, yeah, those, so those are kind of some of the high-level findings from the data collection. Could you go on to the last slide, please? I just wanted to mention that as part of our data collection, we provided a technical memo to the town with more detailed results from each study. We always offer, you know, follow-up studies and discussion, and this is part of that. And that's, that's all I had prepared, but I'd love to answer any other questions that...
I just want to ask, and I want to ask you after, like, what's the takeaway?
What's the takeaway?
Yeah.
Well, we've, so, I think the original request was more to understand existing conditions before development and changes occur. There wasn't one single complaint that we were asked to really zoom in on. And maybe the closest one that I'm remembering is the, the delay drivers experience on Elm Street trying to turn. And this is just to put, put some numbers to what that really is. But you kind of, it's really giving you some data that you could use to diagnose different issues, you know, speeding, the need for turning lanes, et cetera.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just trying to understand from, from you, Seth.
Sure.
Kind of what we hope to do with this information.
Sure. Can I give some context in the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
I have the context on Elm Street, and what that does is helps us to take the next level. I have the context on Elm Street, and what that does is helps us to take the next level. Next step as it relates to any kind of design for that intersection to help with emergency services, but also that speeding problem. With the data now, we can say, okay, who do we want to bring to the table to help us sort out this problem if we determine that's the next step we want to take? So you have a foundational base of knowledge that you can work on to say, okay, we've identified the problem. We know what it is, we know what to anticipate in terms of our emergency vehicles trying to exit Elm Street, or cars who might be congested there when someone's trying to get out. How do we take that data, work with the design team if we so choose, to come up with a solution that helps with that? So with the five-way, though, we have all sorts of things going on in this spot. I mean, we have concerns about speeding on Union, High Street, Main Street. Even heard something about River Street last week. I think Main Street might maybe will need residents who haven't called me about speeding. Maybe because it's a relatively steep hill going up that direction. We have concerns from crossing guards, about children crossing over from the River Streets, trying to get over to the elementary school. We have significant drainage problems with that five-way intersection, which has led to a $500,000 project on our Elm Street Bridge, which we're going to do in this spring. We have concerns about, once again, response from our fire department heading up Elm Street towards that bridge and navigating that five-way intersection while there's this much congestion happening there. So we have all sorts of things we need to try to figure out with this spot. The town previously, 10, 12 years ago, tried to reconfigure that intersection.
And it failed miserably?
Failed very miserably and very quickly.
Almost instantly.
And I don't come to you for that, but maybe because it didn't take this first step to say, let's understand this better and start having more public dialogue about what we should or shouldn't be doing with this spot. And this is prior to any understanding of how the drainage is not accommodating the amount of stormwater coming through and what that's costing you and myself as taxpayers in the community for the related infrastructure. So a whole bunch of things here. Speeding, what can we do with the intersection to help with that? Stormwater is a big one, we're already trying to deal with that. River Street's in complete disrepair at this point, and that's because we have nowhere to put the water. We have homeowners at the bottom of the hill, it's one of the lower points in the downtown, experiencing significant, significant issues with their property. So I mean, a whole bunch of things. So the next steps are, okay, now I have data that I can work with to engage with the civil engineering team to say, okay, we need to address our stormwater problems, our pedestrian crossing problems, and our speeding problems in this intersection. Never mind the fact there's also the aesthetic, which I didn't talk about, which we have a tremendous amount of asphalt right in the middle of that kind of asphalt, strange parking lot situation going on there. Can we do something that reifies the intersection as well? So can we make it function better? Can we make it safer? Can we make it slower? Can we make it look, kind of where I'm at? So getting the baseline knowledge so we can take that instead of, okay, now this, we know about the intersection.
So Matt's in?
Yeah, no, I think, good job, Henry, that's awesome. And Seth pretty much weighed it all out, and I was around when they tried that little pop-up reconfiguration. You know, I, you know, and I could say a whole, I could say a whole lot of things, thoughts on that, but I won't. But I do hope when a consultant is retained to kind of go through that. Obviously, all this data is going to inform that, and it'll be good to just really think it through about how that intersection can be improved. I personally don't know necessarily, think that it needs to be reconfigured for traffic, maybe a little bit. But, you know, in this town that prides itself, this is, that prides itself on how pretty it is, you have that massive sea of asphalt, it is not pretty. And it enters into some beautiful neighborhoods, Union Street, all those neighborhoods are beautiful. And that's an eyesore. So between mitigating stormwater, mitigating the traffic as best we can, golden opportunity to do that when the time comes. And I'm really, I thank the town for really kicking this through and everything. I think it could be great.
Okay, Steve?
Steve, what possible? When I think of that intersection, I think about one way, there's no stop. And then there's stops almost every other way. And I wonder if somebody's not used to that intersection, or even if you are, it seems potentially dangerous. And I think the information we probably don't have from any of these studies is, do we know the rate of accidents there, automobile or pedestrian? If it were high, I think that might argue for addressing this thing. And if not, maybe not as urgent.
I do know that there was some confusion as to who's supposed to stop. For instance, that left turn off Main Street onto Elm, there's no stopping. If you turn left, somebody's facing you, they get confused. But I haven't experienced any of that recently.
Are there accidents there?
There are occasionally, there are occasionally accidents. And we could certainly get accident data from the police department.
I use it every day, and so, and I'm not an expert, I'm an armchair observer. But it isn't, it isn't so much accidents, I would say, it is near accidents. So you're always stopping, jerking, not sure starting, and then stopping again. Car behind you doesn't know that. It just causes a lot of anxiety and confusion. If there's a cost to that, I don't know, I'm sure there is. But there's that, and then there's, of course, the school bus problem. If you have an emergency that requires emergency vehicles to come down into town, you've got almost complete a blockage for about an hour, or half an hour. It's not, I don't think that's the critical feature, because they can get around. There's no way to really get around it easily. But there's a lot of confusion there, other than an accident, doesn't have to be an accident. It doesn't tell the whole story, is what I'm going to say.
Two quick questions. Did the town incur any expense by requesting the study, or is that just state services that are providing?
It's, there weren't, there wasn't any expense for the study.
And Seth, how do you envision, or how do you envision a commission to address these problems going forward? How would that constitute any type of thing?
I haven't thought that far ahead yet, but I think there's one consulting to call on the board about what the next steps are here.
Daniel, I just wondered, to go away from the five-way intersection, go down the other end of Elm Street. Have we talked about or considered where the lights are going to be to stop traffic? That is to say, are we going to, are we going to propose the state to put a light on 101 that would go off when fire trucks and ambulances leave? I'm sure we'll have one in front. I assume we'll have one or two in front on Elm Street to stop traffic on Elm Street. Or at least we'll have something that gives us plenty of time. I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if I'd like to see the ambulance that got hit by a car going over 50 miles an hour coming up that hill. And yeah, is it going to happen? Well, it's a low percentage, but if 5% of the cars are going over 50 miles an hour, it's definitely not an improbable or impossible kind of percentage. I don't know what you guys have been talking about.
Oh, yeah, this was the first step, understanding the speed and the turning issues with that area, and taking this now to the next level with traffic design and civil engineering, to see if there's something we can do.
And also, my recollection is that the ambulance, two of the hours are a really high call volume for the ambulances, about 7:00. I remember about the afternoon, and I do remember thinking about that there's quite a few calls early in the morning.
Do tend to coincide with the heavy traffic.
Right, so that would be the same time as you have heavy traffic.
Vehicle accidents, yeah.
Just curious. Excellent questions. Anything else?
No, just keep us in mind, usually studies come, create other questions, and we may have other ways to help out.
Yeah, great presentation, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody read the minutes from October 7?
Yes. Yes, now they are. My motion to approve as revised.
And I'll second it.
Excellent. As a man, I was always a good one.
I kept that out of the way. We have two items that's been from, oh, well, this one's the West Peter Road Spendable Trust Fund.
West Peter Road Spendable Trust First, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, this is Seth. Yeah.
This is written that has been by the greengrocer or lives in West Peter or has done it in Main Street recently, we did a section of sidewalk. This is why you set up that West Peter Road Spendable Trust Fund when we sunsetted the tip, was for the maintenance of infrastructure to support the tip plan. And so we, hearing quite a few complaints about the quality of sidewalk in that area, got that work done over the last couple of weeks, supported by town labor, planning, and asking to expend rather than using the highway budget from the Spendable Trust for that payment portion.
So what is for?
Yeah. Who was the guy like, 11,000?
380.
380, thank you. Anybody have any questions about this?
Girl, how much does that leave in the trust fund?
Tons.
Lot.
Yeah. Four West Peters.
Yes.
This is after sunsetting.
Yes, so this is after sunsetting, this is the money that got moved to the, Lily's got it right there. Held in the trust account is 1,273,791, and I have not moved the money that was approved at town meeting for the final payout. What was that, 1.6 million? It was 1.6, yeah, that was the last one.
Here's your insurance money.
I wish.
That's too money for that.
It was only spent in West Peter.
I shed a tiny little tear when I look at those numbers. Nice.
All right, so that's fair, then I'll make that most spendable funds for the sidewalk.
Seth?
And then we have 8,157 dollars from the Reclamation Trust Fund for replacing the teeth on one. Does anybody have a guess as to what we could be replacing teeth on? Some gears.
We bought a glass pressure bucket a couple of years ago and did a lot of work with it, but we wore the teeth down on the machine attachment. So this, we had budgeted for this as part of the FY26 budget, but Lily, in thinking through the health insurance and where we might be able to find additional money, has brought to my attention today the possibility of using the Reclamation Trust to cover that expense, therefore saving some money in the operating that we otherwise wouldn't spend. So that's the request. It's already an expense that we budgeted and we intended to pay for, but Lily's quit thinking, 8,000.
Anybody have any questions about crushed glass?
Has it been there how many years?
Oh, gosh.
You would know it's crushed.
No, that's the problem, it's not crushed.
It's in the process of being processed.
It's a big problem there.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
That's a second.
Oh, who's in favor?
Great, get crushed. Get crushed. Yeah, we've been talking about that for a couple, three years now, so.
All right, speaking of sunsetting tips and...
This is tax rate setting, so this is something that most people don't ever get to see. This is the, this is where the portal that we go to, the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration, provide all sorts of forms, make, upload reports and what have you. And also where we go to do the actual tax rate setting once the board has sat and deliberated on what is remaining, decide on which is the use of fund balance. So as we discussed earlier, we do have about $2 million in the fund balance and surplus. You'll see that number right here. The other number that we can adjust, so one of the numbers that we can adjust is how much is the select board wish to use to offset the tax rate. We need to, again, retain about $800,000 for cash flow purposes. We're discussing using over $200,000 for the health insurance that's really going to reduce this debt of about $1 million. There is no expectation that we're going to be replenishing the fund balance at any rapid rate now into the future. The budgets are very tight. Typically, we won't be getting to the end of fiscal years unless we've had an adjustment to, you know, our interest rates, which we had one year, which brought in a lot of unanticipated revenue, things like that. We're really, you know, only returning about $150,000, $200,000 to the fund balance in any given year. So this would be, you know, again, these are, it's good to have some of these funds on hand for emergency expenditures. So my recommendation to the board, particularly in light of the revaluation, which we'll talk about in a moment, that you don't use fund balances here. We are looking to increase the overlay, it was $55,000 last year. We're looking to increase it to about $75,000. Past years where we've done a revaluation, we've used a bit more overlay, so it's good to have that money available to do abatements and whatnot, without having to, you know, spend more than anticipated. So that brings, so when you look at this number, this is a total tax effort. So this is everything that the town has to raise, not only for itself, but also on behalf of the school district, county, and the state education tax. A lot of those are broken out down here. If you follow my cursor down to the initial tax effort. The base that we're talking about, this is our town's total valuation with utilities. That is a tremendous jump, that is over a $300 million jump in assessed valuation from prior year. When it comes to the education raise and appropriate, the education tax raise and appropriate, you use a number that is, that takes out utilities. Why? Because state law said so. So there is a separate number that that tax rate is set on. It's a very small, small amount, but it's a different number. So you have to attack, you have to assess all of these different tax rates differently, but essentially the way you do it is very simple. You take the amount that has to be raised and appropriated for each, you divide that across a total base valuation, and that gives you a rate of taxation. And so we do that for all of these. And that brings us to our proposed tax rate of $22.35, which is $10 less than last year's.
All right.
So we're really looking forward a vote from the select board to use $75,000 of overlay, and then to not use fund balance, to move ahead with that fund balance.
Did everybody catch that? And there are no questions?
Yes.
That's okay.
Me and you got it.
Oh, no, Jeff?
I think you were first, I'm sure.
So what, we say that 800,000 is the, like, kind of goal to look at to remain in fund balance?
That's the absolute minimum.
Right, absolutely.
Cash flow. Yeah, so that's, that would leave no cushion whatsoever for any kind of emergency needs.
Right. So I'm just thinking, I mean, I know that there's, this has been a tough year, it's been a big year. Last year was a big increase, and, you know, at the select board race and at, you know, all the meetings and things that I hear from the public, it says there is a big, you know, we have to, we have to look at spending, we really have to look at taxes, we really have to look at taxes. And I agree with that. And just with that in mind, we have an opportunity to reduce the tax rate a little bit for people, to give back some of what has been remaining in there. And I'm just wondering why we're not looking at that in some way, shape, or form.
Sure. So, yeah, my recommendation is based on the fact largely that the tax rate is already going from $32.50 per thousand to $22.35 per thousand. So it's already dropping over $10 per thousand. Secondly, my concern really is to leave a buffer in the fund balance in case of unanticipated expense in the future. If we don't have enough money in fund balance, we are able to take out tax anticipation notes, but that, of course, comes at a cost. Nobody really wants to borrow, and it's better not to have to borrow, pay interest, and then have an additional tax levy if you can have the money available to you to use for that purpose. Another option for use of the fund balance is to offset the cost of, you know, special warrant articles. So that's another place where you can use fund balance. And then the last reason was really just looking at, what would that actually mean? There are, you know, Lily and I both run a bunch of scenarios to see what the difference would actually be. If you use the entire amount of available fund balance, with the exception of what was needed to retain for cash flow and the health insurance, then you'd be looking at $1 million, and that would bring the tax rate down only to $21.50. So it's not really a dramatic change in fund balance, I mean, or in the tax rate. I mean, yes, it does reduce it, but the cost of potentially reducing it that much could be significant, and I don't think it's proven.
And we did just see a situation where you have to come up with $227,000 for the insurance that we're going to use.
I'm wondering, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm wondering also if you can speak to, or Lily can speak to, the implications for this $10 reduction in tax rate in terms of what people can anticipate on their tax bill? Because I know that's been looked at, and I think that would help.
It really depends, you know, it's going to vary from property to property. A lot of folks are going to see no change, some folks are going to see a drop, even a significant drop to their tax bills. Some folks may even see some small increases, depending on the values of the other properties in their neighborhoods and how those have changed. So it's very hard for me to say uniformly that everyone's going to see a big drop, everyone's going to see a big increase. I think the vast majority of folks are going to see something very similar to what they've experienced before.
Bob Herring Smith, you described a 30%
Bob Herring Smith, you described a 30% increase in the total valuation and a 33% drop in the tax rate. So, it sounds like most people should come out slightly better?
Slightly better.
Unless your assessment really skyrocketed.
Yeah, and let me step back for just a second, and let me say that this is based on your total year tax bill, not what you prepaid in the spring. What you prepaid in the spring is more than likely going to be higher than what you experience in the fall. And there's a lot of reasons for that that I can get into, but this is really based on the total year tax bill, so it's comparing 2024's tax bill to 2025's total tax bill.
Sorry, are there any evaluation of groups of, or areas of groups of homes that were much higher to sort of compensate for the ones that are less high?
Yes.
Or is there any statistics there?
Yeah, so there are.
10% of the homes are this and 20% are this?
There are, and it's, it's all very much in the weeds, but there are definitely some neighborhoods that experienced a larger than 30% increase in value. And you see that through sales data. So Gretchen, I'm kind of looking back in her direction, so she's our assessing clerk. She has access to all that data. So anyone who has any interest in really getting into the weeds on that, you can ask Gretchen to take a look at the Use PAP report, which is the report that the assessor's put together whenever they do a revaluation. It's submitted to the state for their review, certification, and approval, and it's also available for any taxpayer to look at if they're interested in those kinds of statistics, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood, building type by building type, and so on.
It's 500 pages long.
500 pages, yeah. We have it electronically, makes it a little bit easier to go through. And also, if you go to our website, go to the assessing page, you can see, we link directly to a YouTube video where the assessor gives the presentation on the revaluation and provides a very high-level summary of what he saw, what the, what Vision saw as they looked at our community.
Yeah, so you can see in that presentation the different areas of town. And in that presentation, you can see what areas went up by a lot more than other areas. So it's a great way to get a sense for sort of the differential. And so I think that's very informative, and I don't think that's an in-the-weeds thing. I think it's very accessible. So if you want to take a look at that, it can give you a feel for there are some areas where there will be some increase, and there are areas where people will see decreases.
And Danica would have a feeling for projections of new homes or new starts that aren't on the tax bill as yet?
Yes.
There's a few on.
Yeah, there are some, yeah.
Getting back to Mandy's question, would we want to consider any use of fund balance to lower the 22.35 down to?
I'd like to just hear everyone's perspective first.
Oh, yeah, can you tell me if the current assessments in the database on the website are current?
So if you go to the assessing page and click on the link to the Vision database, that's where you can get the current assessments. If you go through our map portal, those are not up to date.
Vision?
Vision, yeah, it's the, I think the link just says, click here to access the Vision database. It's in large letters, bright blue.
Yeah, just going back to the early discussion about the health insurance issue. If we ended up choosing the option where we pay 66, 66 grand now and whatever the balance is on the menu, whatever, in the next budget, how would that be, how would that be shown? Would that still come out of fund balance again, or would we be in the general fund at that point?
No.
How do you envision that happening?
So, it's, it, the decision that the select board is making now doesn't have an impact on the future budget. So the decision that they're making now is whether or not they want to use additional fund balance, additional money out of that cash reserve to lower the tax rate by any amount.
Right, but if we want to do it in July, the big chunk of that, the state still has to say, yes, you can use that, or no?
No, this is something that's built into state law, so we can do this right now.
We know that in the past, we've been pretty generous with fund balance of returning to lower the tax rate, but that was back in the day when the tax rate was really quite astounding.
I have several times.
My sense is, is more maybe political or psychological that there may be a, a use of the fund balance to give the general sense that we are giving you back something. As a, I don't know, as a, what do you call it? What would I call that? I don't know. Not as a reward for being good citizens, but that's not quite the term. But there's a sense that you are very concerned, concerned about the citizens' tax rates or taxes, and that we will attempt to do some of this, but we wouldn't do a lot. I mean, we lose something. I'm not sure how to put that exactly, but I guess a concern.
I mean, if I could, I think what you're trying to say, if I could, if I could help with it, like, I, the way that I view fund balance is that it's exactly right, it is a way of giving back, but it is a surplus from previous years of monies that we, we did not spend, and so it was raised and the taxpayers paid it. And so it's, it's not really psychological, it's math. Like, it's actually refunding them the money that we didn't spend that we thought we would spend. So it was taxpayer money to begin with, and I, I think that that's the intention of it, which is why the state doesn't require a special meeting to use fund balance in this manner, because this is kind of what it's intended to be, but... And I, and I didn't want to have another, like, I just, I think that, you mentioned psychological and it...
Your explanation's better.
Oh, thank you, but it also made me think of, there's a, there's some other psychological aspects too, and when we talk about, yes, there is a $10 decrease, I think that there still needs to be some thought into the, the number of people who are struggling to pay their taxes, and I just, I just wanted to be that voice because I know that that's something that I hear a lot from my fellow neighbors, and I don't, I just wanted to make sure that that was heard here. And I represent not a large house, I have a very small housing square foot ranch, a very modest house on a very modest property, and this decrease is going to be a $900, no, $750, doing the math right in my head, increase to me this year with the revaluation. So it's not only big houses, I think some smaller modest houses are going to see an increase, even though the tax rate decreased. So I think that, again, I, I hear a lot from the town saying that we are doing everything we can to keep the taxes low, and if we don't use some fund balance, then we're not necessarily doing everything we can. But I also understand having money is in case of emergencies, but that's, that's where we get to look at our budgets and promise, you know, to figure out how to work within that budget. And I, this health insurance thing is something that we obviously couldn't anticipate, but in our own household budgets, when expenses come up, we, we figure out a way. So I just wanted to clumsily state that. I was just sitting here doing the math, based on the Vision. We live in a duplex, and even though the rate's going down $10, our property taxes are going up by 509.
Oh, how much?
509.
The big question for me is, if we were to use the maximum fund balance to reduce the rate, what impact is that really going to have? You know what I'm saying? I don't know what that number is, I can't do the math in my head, but...
Well, it'll depend on the person's property.
Depends on the property.
Sure, of course.
For some, it could mean $300, for some, it could mean...
The rate would be 21.49.
About a dollar per thousand?
Less than. 75 cents.
Which, again, to you or I, may not mean the difference, but to some...
There's, there's no question that it's an impact and it can make a big difference. I just, again, I'm very concerned about making sure that we have some money available. We've had, we've had two emergencies just in the last five years. So, I mean, it's, it's, it does happen, and it's important to have that money available.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Have we heard from everyone? I just want to make sure we hear all the voices. So now.
Dave, have you more?
Dave.
I just, I'm not clear about, you know, we have 2 million surplus. We're talking about taking 214 out. That takes you to 1.8, and I mean, we have to have at least 800,000 dealt one touch.
We can't.
So, we're really talking about a million dollars and how much you might allocate to return to the taxpayer when you want. That's how much I see it, is that...
That's correct, that's the maximum.
Am I thinking better?
That's the maximum, yeah.
So, no, I mean, if it was 800,000, then I would want at least 50% of that or maybe 100% of that as a cushion for the town. Then, then you only end up with a couple hundred thousand available. But it seems to me that that is the crux of matters. How much above the 800,000 do we need? And how much of that million might be playable? It may not be very much, but I think Alice said, you know, at least... You know, at least, it says we're trying, we're considering it. And that, and I will also tell her that, you know, since people figured out that I was on the budget committee, I'm getting tired of getting that, you know, the cost of, why this or why that, you know. It's hard because we have to pay our bills, so...
I'd also like to, you know, just say that this fund balance can be used and has been used often in recent years to offset special warrant articles, so they don't have an additional impact on the tax rate. So it's not that this money will always just sit there and not be used, but it can and has been used, it could, like, for instance, we were just talking about, what if you were to set up an expendable trust so that if future healthcare assessments were to happen, you would have that to draw on? We can use fund balance for that without having to raise additional dollars for that purpose. So there, there are a lot of uses and have been a lot of uses for fund balance, but you have to have some available to be able to consider that. Again, where, it's not, you know, I don't want to say that's purely psychological because obviously there is a monetary impact to using or not using fund balance. But in a year where we're looking at, essentially, we've, through the revaluation, through bringing the West Peterborough tip properties back into the fully assessed portion of the, the valuation, we were able to completely balance out the entire cost of the fire station bond this year without having to do anything different with the tax rate, without having to use any of the fund balance or what have you. So we've been able to essentially completely level fund the town's operating budget and all the capital reserve articles from last year to this year. This is, you know, it's what the taxpayers had voted for. So I would, you know, just urge caution, you know, when looking at the one-time use of the fund balance, that we would not be able to replicate next year.
How easy would it be for the finance department just to calculate how many properties are going up more than 5% versus how many are going down less than 5%, or whatever the numbers might be, before the select board makes that final decision? Is that something that's...
We can't run those numbers until we have a tax rate. We're at that point in the year where, in order to be able to do that math, we need to be able to do the import into the tax software.
So I was going to use that 22.35 tax rate, how many would go up, how many would go down significantly?
I don't, I don't know, because there's too many moving parts. You have, you have some exemptions and credits that come into play. You have, there's so many pieces that, that all feed into all of that. So I really can't tell you, you know.
But, just on that point, but to get to the 22.35, all those pieces had to be incorporated?
More or less, yes. So if you look at that, it's just not, I can't tell you on a property-by-property basis. I can tell you on the aggregate, and all of that information's available here.
Well, I think that's what you're asking.
I'm asking, I'm not sure why you couldn't tell. I mean, anecdotally, two people just fit and said, oh, you know, this is going up X percent, and cows is going up.
So for... I understand, so you're saying for the, you know, what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, but what I, you're asking, is a town able to run a test essentially of whether or not every individual tax bill is going to go up or going, or is going to go down based on the...
They can usually do that, yes.
Right. So the only way that I can, that we can do that is really through the tax system. And so we have to take everything from the assessing database, all that information, import it into the tax software, and then run a test bill. And so then you run a test tax warrant, which then takes all of the, for instance, you know, you may have two identical condos, one right next to the other. They're both interior, they both sold at the same time, they both have the exact same improvements or no improvements, whatever, identical condos. They may receive two very different tax bills because the person here is paying just a regular tax bill, and the person here has a veterans credit and a disabled credit or an elderly tax exemption or what have you. None of that stuff can be anticipated until we run all of it through the tax software. So Beth can't do that until we finish the work here. So it's, it's just too difficult to...
Well, but I think what I'm hearing, though, is we could do a test run.
Just seems those, those things you just mentioned, I think those are exemptions. I mean, I think 98% of the houses, or maybe 90% of the houses out there don't have all those exemptions, whether they be...
I'd be surprised at how many do, yeah.
And then I think, just to, just to clarify, though, what you're looking for is just an overall aggregate of how many, how the schools went up versus down?
Correct.
Oh, for more than 5%?
Whatever the number is, I mean, I threw out a 5%, just something significant, you don't care.
It would be, it's not too difficult to do that just based on the valuation of the properties. Gretchen has those numbers right now. We can't do that in terms of tax bills, though. Tax bills have, like I said, a lot more moving parts that go into them. So it's, that's, that's where we run into those issues. So it's really just a matter of, at what side of the calculation are you trying to, to get those numbers?
Yeah, again, I think it's just useful information for the cycle before they make that final decision, but it's not, like you said, there's a lot of complications involved.
Yeah, it's not impossible, it's just challenging.
I would say time is of the essence. Longer, like, if we don't make a decision tonight, we're looking at the next select board's meeting before we make a decision as to how, how much we're keeping out of fund balance, which means we're not going to have a tax rate, which means tax bills are going to go out. So, I mean...
I'm sorry, you were like, you're making a decision tonight?
Exactly, yeah. The IRA won't finalize our rate without this piece of information.
They cannot, yeah, no one can. And so right now, if we're able to set the tax rate, we'll be able to get the bills out well before Thanksgiving, which means that they will be due well before Christmas. The last thing we really want to do is have tax bills co, you know, be due at the same time as Christmas.
That was cool.
Nicole, are you, are you recommending that the select board takes no money out of, none? Not one penny out of the remaining?
That is my recommendation. And if you, again, you know, to have that emergency money available, my, my, my very foggy crystal ball right now is telling me that we're not going to be returning an awful lot of money to fund balance this year or next year. And a lot of that is, is things that I'm seeing on the human services side of things, as well as other costs that are completely out of control. We just talked about health insurance. Health insurance, we're already expecting to get sent double digits, and that's, that... So what they have warned us is to look at, you know, a potentially 8% to 16% increase on not just our current, what we expect for health insurance in our budget, but also with the assessment on top of that as well. And every other health insurance company that we've spoken to has said that they're also looking at, you know, doing large increases. So there's no way that we're going to avoid that, you know, as we go into this budget process. We're not going to be able to replicate a credit, as it were, on the tax rate in the future. I don't see that happening. So if we were to lower it to 21.50, you know, the maximum amount, even if I'm able to, you know, you know, with the department directors, deliver a budget to the budget committee and the select board that is absolutely flat by some miracle, even if we were able to do that next year, it's guaranteed that the tax rate will go up to at least 22.35 because we won't have fund balance to use next year. So there will be an increase in the tax rate, no matter what. So, you know, whether that's, you know, a dollar impact that you feel deeply or psychological impact that, that you want to see, it's, it's really, it's a limitation on our ability to respond to emergencies that is outweigh, you know, that I, I don't think is really beneficial in the end, as beneficial as, as we might like it to be.
I'm just curious how the select board feels about that recommendation.
Well, yeah, when we discussed it with Nicole earlier, I was excited that we wouldn't have to use fund balance because as long as I've known the board, we've used a lot of fund balance over the years for drastic reasons. But I've also been through some crises that I never imagined would happen. And I don't trust that there's not going to be more crises because I, I couldn't imagine there being any worse than what we've seen in some of the instances. But you never know what could happen, and then this, this, getting hit with a... And then this, this, getting hit with this two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars with the insurance, I mean, that, to me, I am so angry about that, and the, I call it malpractice, they, these people, you know, and we're, we're left holding the bag, so, you know, I'm, I'm really leaning towards having some emergency fund, but I completely understand, now having had this whole conversation, going, right, well, how much can we use? Maybe we could use some, we have to keep some, you know, so I'm not, I'm really not quite sure. I'd like to hear what you guys think.
I'm considering. I'm leaning towards not using fund balance this year. We've done it in the past, and we run into some issues. My sense is that, if there's any psychological value to forty-two cents, I don't know what it is, a thousand.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I think Dave, you said it very eloquently, that the, the challenge is balancing being able to manage future risk, that you don't really know what it is, versus giving some back this year, which we probably can only do this year. The thing that I'm concerned about is we do know that there are storms brewing on the horizon. And one of those is the potential elimination of the SNAP benefits, which we hear maybe they can pay part of it, but we also know what the systems in the state can't process, are not built to process part of it. So there could be some very big impacts to this town. It's not just SNAP that could go away, it's also the heating bill support that we provide as a town could go away, there's WIC that could go away, and we are obligated as a town to support people when they have no other funds, to do those, to eat and to keep their homes. And if they are eligible, separate and apart from whether they get the funds, but if they are eligible for the funds, they automatically are eligible for us to support them.
Regardless of what's available.
Regardless of what's available. So I, I see risk, you know, I talked about, we don't know what the risk is, I actually see risk, that's, that's very near-term and difficult to quantify, and so if we did give some back, I would be very cautious about how, how much, especially if it's a one-time opportunity. So I really do want to make sure that we're thinking about this thoughtfully, and that we're making sure this town can stay whole with some kind of looming challenges.
The point there, I think you're saying, is that if we don't give it back as a lump sum, if you give it back as a lump sum, it's spread across the entire population, if we don't give it back, we can be selective as to who we support.
Well, and you may just have to be giving that support, based on the, the wealth law, yeah.
Can I add something before, while we're, I also have to add that I really trust Nicole's judgment, being in the day and the day out of running this operation, and, and knowing, and just knowing how the board rolls with a lot of this stuff, and I, so her recommendation really weighs heavy for me. Go ahead, Alex.
Thank you. The question I would probably ask Lily, and I think it's been answered, but I can't remember that part back in the conversation, is the interest earned on this money that would stay in one of this, this big account? So what could that be, and are there, are there some higher earning accounts that we can use some, you have some very clever ways of making money. Or do you have...
The projections that I had for earning interest this year was seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, because last year we benefited from bank interest to the tune of seven-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars. The several Fed drops that have occurred in the last two months have changed my projections that I have had to give to the DRA in order to get to this place. I had to lower several areas of revenue that's non-tax revenue, and I lowered it to four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. It is, it is dropping, and we expect three more drops in the next four months. It could, it could go as low as one-five-seven.
Then the question would be, can the taxpayers use that money more effectively than we would use that money? The interest earned. The question I get is, the question I run into is, not to counter this, this debate at all, is, well, it's unfortunate that we had our assessments done at the time of the highest rates of valuation of property. Properties have all gone up, and they do go up every few years, that's denying reality to say that wouldn't happen. But that's when we happen to do our assessments. So they're saying it's a double whammy in a way, we have high taxes and high assessments. I guess we wouldn't have, had lower assessments, we'd have probably maybe the same taxes.
Well, that's the thing.
I don't know how to present that exactly.
Yeah, I mean, that's the interesting thing.
I was trying to use interest rates as a way to maybe say, oh, we're getting something for our money here.
Yeah, because the pie of what we have to spend is, is, you know...
It never changes.
It's fixed, it's fixed, and so then if evaluation, I mean, just at a very high level, evaluations go up, tax rate has to go down. That's just the dynamic. So just because we, if, if in fact we did the assessment at peak, or not, but at a very high level, in historic terms, that's why we see such a big tax rate drop this, this round. I don't, I don't know if we've seen one this big before.
It's, it's pretty dramatic. I mean, I'd have to go back historically, not since I've worked here has there been a drop this, this dramatic.
So this is a big tax rate drop.
I will say, though, since I've worked here, and I started working here in two thousand and six, so I've already been through a housing crisis, working for the town, the prior select boards have looked at market data and said, we need to do a midterm statistical revaluation to make sure that our assessments are reasonably close to market value, and they have gone down. So there's no reason why if, you know, you're, I think you're alluding to potentially a correction in the market happening at some point, you could certainly look at, you know, the board could look at a midterm statistical revaluation based on existing market data and make adjustments accordingly. Gretchen?
I can say that we hope for a market correction, but right now, prices, market values of homes continue to increase.
I've seen sales happen that I do expect happening, in our neighborhood.
But it's a, it's an inverse relationship, so, so when evaluation's high, tax rate goes down. If we did another evaluation, because the market is, is maybe making a correction down, tax rate would go up. So it's, it's, it's all relative. And so we're seeing a big decrease in the tax rate because evaluations were so high. And then how that affects each person is a little bit different. And I really do appreciate the question that you asked earlier about proportionally what that looks like.
Right, I just didn't realize the timing. And I, personally, I'd just like to say, I support no fund balance going as an individual citizen, based on this discussion. I think that, my recommendation to the select board is not to use any fund balance.
Is a citizen or a member of the...
In January, I'll have a different conversation.
Which house do you own?
As a private citizen.
It's a tough, it really is a tough decision. We're all paying, we're all paying taxes here, we're all, we all are concerned for our neighbors.
I think Bonnie's point is well taken, as far as unanticipated, I mean, we can also talk about, you know, hurricanes, we can talk about snowstorms, talk about Medicaid and ACA issues, you know, people losing insurance, all those things could affect the town, you say, we have to help these people.
Bob, Bob Eric Smith, the way off, the way off your seesaw of assessment of tax rates is add more housing, have more businesses, expand the base on which the tax rate is based. But in the meantime, I would hang on to the, the fund balance reserve.
And part of the fund balance is from money of new bills, you know, that weren't expected when the previous...
No, I just wanted to, just to, for the, for the, for the record, so to speak, I just wanted to say that I fully, also fully trust Nicole, and I fully trust the select board to make the decision that is right for the town. You know, that is your jobs, it's a thankless job, and, you know, we do appreciate that. I just wanted to also just make the comment that maybe we not be so celebratory about the increase, or the decrease, so to speak, in tax rate, when we do know there are going to be some people who are still hit with an increase. So I think that's just something that I'm very sensitive to, and I think a lot of other people are sensitive to it as well, so.
Just to clarify, my celebration has a lot more to do with being able to fully offset the fire station bond?
Yes.
Without, without seeing an increase whatsoever?
This isn't about your personal...
I know, I know, I just, for, you know, for record, as it were, that's, that's my celebration point, is that we're, you know, that the timing worked out so well, and of course, every revaluation, you know, has, has those people, you know, that, you know, see a bit of a break as opposed to see a, see a surprise increase in their business.
But no, just to finish, like, I meant, like, select board and also budget committee, I think it's a, it's a natural tendency for us to think that it's a, you know, it's a, it's a big savings for a lot of people, but I just wanted to just be aware of that, that there are some people who are still going to see an increase that is going to hit them hard, and it's harder to take when people are celebrating, because others may have gotten a decrease, so.
I just let everybody quit. My own personal observation over about fifty years of home ownership, including areas along Seacoast, is that, well, either we can observe our associates down in Ridge, our neighbors in Ridge, is we focus way too much on the tax rate. The tax rate doesn't mean a damn thing, because as we've taught, valuation goes up, the tax rate goes down. What really counts for individual taxpayers is where they live, and where their neighborhood goes up and down in relationship to the other neighborhoods in the town that we live in. And that is something that none of us have control over, because it is after all a marketplace. And, I mean, some of it, some of it's controlled, okay, like Carly, Carly's built to be an exclusive neighborhood, and one would expect that the evaluations and assessments up on Carly reflect that. And they should.
They do.
And I think they probably do, and as Bonnie said, you can, we can watch the vision thing, you get an idea about how those things work. And that's really what affects each of us as individuals, is where we live in town in relation to the other parts of town, and, and as individual buyers' preferences for where they want to live in this town affect the assessments and the actual transactions. For a lot of us, we don't have any control over that either, you know, it's just the way it's going to be. And so, my wife and I, having lived in the seashore, what we observed was, everyone along the seashore was really happy when their house sold for five-hundred-thousand dollars more than they paid for it three years before, but they hated the hell out of their tax bill. And, I mean, you know, some of, we get to be like that. I'm hoping mine will be a small something or other, I have no idea, because I tend not to even look at it, but, but that's really, somehow in the discussions, people really need to understand not to focus just on their tax rate, because it's actually their assessment versus all the other assessments in town, as you look at how that, how that goes. And, you know, if we're one billion and thirty, we're going to need an awful lot of development to affect that. What was it, somebody said to me today that Woodman, Woodman Drive, that's eight million dollars. How much is that as a percentage of your tax rate, or your assessment, just a drop in the bucket? Nobody would ever see that. So, I mean, you're talking about big developments in a town that already has a barely sizable tax base, talking seriously big developments to make super noticeable changes in our tax rate.
I think we're in coherence about not taking any money out of the year. I've, I've been convinced.
I think that's the cautious way to go.
And you're okay with a suggested overlay of seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, and Bill, I think your, your point, if we were, I mean, I still feel very strongly about what I shared earlier, about the kind of risk that some people are going to be facing very, very soon, the SNAP benefits, who knows? I'm very worried about, and I want to ensure we're in sufficient help to be able to handle that. I don't know ultimately what that number's going to be, but it's a pretty daunting potential situation for us to deal with. And what I worry about, and Bill, I think you hit on this, is that if we were to take some of that money out and give it back, but yet leave sufficient buffer for what we know are, are storms coming soon, that we can't yet quite quantify, the, the per-household impact of the portion that we could give back would be so small. And that's where I just feel...
By comparison to the impact that it could have.
The impact we could have for people doing...
And there is always the abatement.
Absolutely.
For people that are truly hurting and can't...
For people who think that, you know, their house has, you know, been, been assessed improperly, they're, they can't, so I, again, you know, I wanted to end the conversation on this note anyways, which is, everyone should take a look, go to the vision database, take a look at the property record card, make sure that it's correct. If you have any questions about what you're seeing, maybe you don't understand what, you know, this property record card is telling you. Gretchen's always available, whether by phone, in person, or by email. She gives great support to our residents with the assessments. And if you think that there is something incorrect based on, you know, look at your house, and you're like, okay, well, you know, this house is very similar to mine, we're in the same neighborhood, they just sold and it's for less than what I'm being assessed for, this doesn't make any sense, that's the kind of data that you can put into a request for abatement. And then it'll be reviewed and considered by the assessor, potentially, you know, you can appeal to Department of, I'm sorry, to the Board of Tax and Land Appeal, VTOA, or Supreme Court, if you would prefer to go that way, Superior Court rather, I want to go in that direction, most people don't. But those options are available to you, so there's, there's a whole process that you can go through.
You're right.
You know, folks who are, you know, elderly, who may qualify for the elderly tax credit should apply, or at least reach out to Gretchen to see what they, what steps they need to take. Beth is also great at helping folks answer those questions when they come to her window. You know, we're really here, so if anyone's got any questions or concerns, please reach out to us. There's usually something we can either do, if nothing else, just to explain, you know, why we got to where we are, however that is.
Do we need to actually vote on that rate?
Uh, yeah. That'd be great.
I need that motion to go with that.
I'll second, for sure.
Excellent discussion, really, thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming out and your perspectives.
I just close it out, I didn't make any changes, Lily. Okay.
Okay, public service announcement. There, we were talking about SNAP. Apparently, the state is putting out twelve million dollars to supplement SNAP benefits, but it's only on, for food, and it's only on mobile food. on, for food, and it's only on mobile food, not court, what, food pantry. It's mobile, and there's only one in the, not the Asian, it's in Keene.
Yep. It's at the Public Works Facility in Keene. And they are operating the same hours as our food pantry?
Yeah, they're, so Saturdays from, I believe it's nine to 12.
I saw, I saw there were four days that they were open Saturdays and there was eight to twelve.
They were all, yeah, or, yeah, eight to 12 on those Saturdays, which is the same hours here in Peterborough, so do people really want to direct to Keene when they can go right to the one in town?
I strongly urge the population to support other food pantries.
Well, that's an important point.
Dublin has, Dublin has announced an open-ended, take it or leave it kind of food pantry, and open 24 hours. And I don't know if that's a model for something we could do here.
We have one on Conference Street. On Conference Street, in the churches.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I think, no, I think Bill was saying also, you know, people can support it.
If they can.
If you can, please do.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Let me stand that line, I'm dying.